Only change, that's not bad if that's the only change, but so with that being said, need a motion to.
I'll make a question here for quickly, man.
Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered. Citizens report, anybody from the citizens have something? Please state your name and address.
Gilson, Boone Street. I just want to, the ordinance that you guys proposed last month about the pet food. Who's going to enforce that? What's going to prevent people from moving it to the rear of the property? And in our case, we feed stray cats, but we empty holes and leave the bowls on the porch at night.
Okay, well, that's pretty much all I was looking for last month when I made the the motion. There, went back and looked at all of our ordinances, and there is an ordinance already in place for feeding cats. Once you've set the food out for the cats, it's supposed to be brought back in within an hour. Other than that, I don't think we need to go to the wildlife side, being as our ordinance is for phenines. So we'll just, we'll leave what we got in place and we'll try to enforce that.
And how are you going to enforce that? Are you going to, do the police come up on people's porch and look if they see if the bowls are full or?
I would, I would hope that once we put it out on the website and everything, try to get people, anybody that I know that sits cat food out, I'm going to go and say something to them. Being as we have an ordinance, it's not like I'm going out and starting something new, you know, with them, so that's the game plan.
Okay. Aye.
Thank you. Anyone else? State your name and address.
Larry, Avenue 250 Pleasant, Bromley. I've got a couple of questions. Having trouble with a gentleman parking on Pike Street, heading towards Lobo, right on the corner of Boone Street. And you go to pull out of there, you got to pull out almost all the way in, the uncoming traffic before you can make the turn. And I was told that since that's a state highway, there's nothing the city of Bromley can do. But according to the state of Kentucky, if there's not a traffic device assigned, no parking and stuff like that, and if the city has an ordinance, they can paint back 20 feet from that corner.
Okay.
I'd like to see something done about that.
Larry, I'm sorry, where is this turning off of from Pike Street?
Pleasant Street, Pleasant and Pike.
Right by the gas, the old gas station.
I'm sorry?
It's on the gas station side, not towards Waffle Side.
What gas station?
Pleasant, Pleasant Street, where the old gas station used to be. Raymond Curl's old place.
Yeah, I remember that real well. It's on, what would you call it, they're beyond the, the west side of Route 8.
Okay.
Going toward Lobo.
All right.
I had to think about that for a minute.
All right.
Then there was another thing I was going to ask. Oh, yes. On occupational license. I paid Kent County wide because of my business. Now there's, then I pay the city of Bromley an occupational license for rental property. Now Kent County sent me a thing requesting an occupational license for Kent County. I mean, if I'm buying a Kent County wide occupational license, the business is in my name, the properties are in my name, so once I buy Kent County, it should take care, take care of all of them, seemed like to me.
I don't know if one's strictly for your business and the other one's for residential?
Uh huh.
Rent?
But it's all in my name, it's property, it's not something, the business, the property is in my name. Just because it's a business, it may have nothing to do with it. But I'm paying Kent County wide occupational license because I do tell him, the business is not going nowhere, but you know, I have to have that to do to tell him.
So Larry, you're, I just don't understand your point. The point is, is that you, you feel you are paying an occupational license on a business that you own for automotive work and for rental that should be combined or it should be the same?
Well, it seems like if the property is all in my name.
What, oh, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah. It seems like if the property, you know, if the property, my business was in Hammond's Auto Body and Telling, but it's not, it's in my name.
Okay.
And so is my rental property, it's in my name. You know, I'm paying twice for occupational license, a rental license, whatever y'all call it up here, I'll be paying it twice.
Our, well, ours is a rental license that doesn't have anything to do with occupational licensing.
No.
They're saying to be one from Kent County. I should have brought it with me, I forgot.
Which is.
Yeah, they want me to have an occupational license for rental property.
So it sounds to me that they're segregating the two. They're saying you got a, you got a business here of automotive repair, right? And you're also a landlord, so I think your issue may be with them, not, not so much the city.
Well, it seems like they shouldn't get taxed twice on the same thing.
I, I agree with you.
I, I agree too, but.
I may agree with you, but I, I don't, I don't know that it's our issue, it would be somebody, somebody to talk to there.
Can you get a hold of Dave?
They're saying you're two, you've got two businesses, is what they're basically saying.
But, but I'm paying Kent County for every city in Kent County an occupational license. So that should cover all of it. I mean, I gotta pay one for the city of Bromley and then plus rental license and plus my business. I would think that's fair.
I'm, I'm still confused, but I.
You're confused?
Well, every city is because he goes out and toes.
Sure.
And so that's his occupational for his business. Now the one for the properties, we're charging a rental license, but as far as an occupational license, I don't know that we've ever had an occupational license.
We, we're not charging.
Right, right, but, but I don't think the county charges an occupational license for rental property.
Oh yeah, they do.
They do.
Do they?
Yes. So that's where he's getting double. He's getting, yeah. And that's why I'm saying, I think your issue is more, more so with Kent County than it is us.
Well, I just thought since I was hit, the county wide occupational license would take care of Bromley's and everybody else's too.
If that's for your business, but it doesn't, it doesn't for rental license.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, a rental license, I mean, rental property is a business also.
That's the point.
It's in my name, so is my body shop. That property is in my name.
So you are operating two separate businesses?
So if I could bind it all together, then it would be different then, which would be real simple. I do contact an attorney like him and put it all into one name.
Well, so if I could just stop, we, so we don't want to provide, so the council doesn't want to provide legal advice, I'm the city attorney, I can't provide you legal advice. I'm very familiar with the occupational license process. I personally can't give you legal advice on that, but what I can tell you, it, it sounds like you're frustrated, I hear you. What I can tell you, if, if, have you contacted the Kent County?
Well, I just got one, I mean, I just got it.
In the mail?
About the last month.
So I will say the people down at the, the Kent County office are incredibly helpful, and they genuinely are, I can tell you that from personal experience at owning my own businesses and advising others on businesses. There's a lot that we don't know about your operations, and even if we, even, I could give you the answer if I asked you questions, but I can't legally because I can't give you legal advice.
I understand, I understand.
I would, but a free way to do it honestly is to call, just to give them a call. A lot of that stuff, they get notices and then they automatically mail things out. Give them a call, explain what your business operations are, explain, most importantly, from a tax perspective, you know, the entities or if it's all in your name, and they'll be able to answer your questions, because Kent County is, it sounds like is a big part of the issue that you're having, which is completely separate from, from Bromley. And then, for example, if, if you get everything set up with Kent County and you find that you're, you feel you're being taxed twice for the same thing in Bromley, definitely bring it back to council. I would just hate for you to get the wrong advice with a bunch of people trying to help you. But I promise you, Kent County people are very nice, I talk to them all the time. Some, some, sometimes, I don't work for them, sometimes, some, but no, they, yeah, so.
All right, I'll approach it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Larry. Anyone else have anything for council? All right, we'll move on. PDS report, Andy?
Um, so, moving cases, but we did add to it, uh, this month, um, there were a couple of properties on Pike Street. Thought I had that in front of me, but, uh, I know that 3 Pike Street was one for overgrowth and there appears to be a makeshift structure that's been built on the backside of the property.
Make shift what?
Make shift structure.
Oh.
On the backside of that one. There was some rubbish, um, at the far end of town, five or so of single white trailers and stuff, so we, we don't know what's there, but other than that, just business as usual.
What about 305 Main and the corner of Kenton and Main?
Um, well, we voted to move towards foreclosure, I don't know that I've gotten any updates on that.
So we, we, the, the city's going to be engaging in litigation, so I'm not going to comment much further other than I've heard the vote that we're going to foreclose on the liens. I, I was going to save this for my portion, just briefly, there are, were a lot of liens, a lot of lien releases, there were a lot of certificates of delinquency from the county and then releases, and there were some other deed changes. We are going to be filing that in the next 14 days roughly.
Okay.
To, to do that, we just want to make sure we name all parties, to make sure everyone has proper service, proper notice, including unknown spouses and things of that nature. So that's all I'll say, we're moving in the right direction.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Is that all, Andy?
That's it.
Police committee, Mike Kendall and chief, or not chief today, it's.
Not today. Um, Chief Stanley mentioned he sent his report, he all have any questions, I hope I can help you with them.
No questions?
No.
That was short and sweet?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You could have done that video.
All right, fire department report, chief. Hope it's not longer now, last one.
Trying not to make it that way.
You're fine.
Should have got me my report, if you have any questions, please let me know. Um, I was, you're on the bench, boy.
Doing a good job, keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
Well, that's short. Awesome.
Hawk committee, Diane?
Um, just continuing with remodel, should hopefully be done this month. If it's all I've got. Do you know if the survey was for the city?
Survey has been complete. Actually, the boundaries have been pinned. You'll, you can see this side over here, they did a saw cut on the concrete and then it's painted over. So you'll see this corner over here and midway down on that side over there.
Saw the red mark.
That's it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
And then on that side, there's a small flag, tiny, but it's hidden under the grass.
On this side of the fence or?
Same way, there's a pin, there's a pin there, halfway down, there's another one, and then another one down there. Looks like we're going to be able to do what we want to do to help drain that, that concrete.
Okay, good.
Is there any way we can take a picture of those pin locations and put them on file?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
All right.
That's all I can do.
That's all you have. Road and Light, my turn. Should I go over there and sit down and do this? L and M has given me a quote for the three speed bumps that we're putting in, it's not speed bumps, it's speed humps. So they're, they're probably about this wide and they're maybe only that tall, but enough to get someone's attention, but shouldn't have that big hammer every time somebody goes over it. There's three speed bumps at 22.8 feet long and there's 39 sections of speed humps, six end caps and 252 lag screws and shields. They did credit us $700 for the one on Roman Avenue that they did tear up, so the final bid after the deduction is 68, $168. So I'm gonna go ahead and let L and M know to go ahead and put the speed bumps in. There'll be three of them now, there'll be one humps, there'll be one on Moore Street, one over here on Roman and one down here on the playground on Shelby Street, mid-block.
Lots of cities like one.
Yeah.
Oh, this is going to take a while.
Yeah, the, the installation of his product is up in Prospect Point, so I went up there and drove over them and looked at them and everything.
How hard are they a little bit?
Uh, they're only maybe four inches, three and a half, four inches, just enough to get your attention.
Why don't you all just put a, can't you put a speed bump in?
Yeah, I, I thought about doing that, but we're looking at, uh, that's the next part of my report, resurfacing the streets. Once that's done, and perhaps we will go with the concrete six footers.
The reason I say that because of the snow removal.
Yeah. Well, he's putting these in for us, so I'm assuming he's going to take them out if he still has the contract on snow removal. On the street resurfacing, mayor asked me to, him and I looked at this, went over it, he thought it was a very fair pricing based off of what we, what we was charged back when we did the last street resurfacing project. Still looking for some grants, there was an email came to me about some grants, I'm looking into that and see if I can get some help. Mayor thought that this was a very good price for the services that they're going to provide all the streets and, and integration and GIS work and the pavement condition analysis and make sure that all the sub base is good to go for a mill and pave. And this has already been approved, so there shouldn't be any action need to be taken on it, we're just going to go ahead and work with Palmer or city engineer at this point.
How much is it?
Uh, it's 24,000.
Okay.
Yeah. 24,900. So, uh, I don't have anything else, Jack?
I'm just kind of laying catch-up on the streets, sweeping because it's such a wet, wet summer.
Yeah.
Can't sweep once a week.
Well, now you're chasing your tail because trees are turning and the leaves are falling and, and everything, so.
There were a few potholes at Roman and, Roman and Moore, and asphalt worked pretty good.
Did it? Good, good. Yeah, if that works the way it should, we can just start hitting all kinds of locations. It's pretty, it's not easy, but I mean, it's, it's not that hard. Good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
On Bromley Crescent, Spring Grove.
We don't want to start engaging with public.
On Bromley Crescent, Spring Grove, is that city's responsibility out there with the followings?
Where's that?
Bromley Crescent, Spring Grove.
No, that's the state highway now, all the way from Route 8 to Crescent Springs.
Why is it called that?
Yep, everything.
Because they got one back there that get really, really bad.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I had to reach out to them last time to get them to come down and do the one out there by, uh, Pat's and Frank's, and so I'm going to reach back out to them again, so. All right, Jack took care of that. License committee, I do not have anything. I was under the assumption we didn't charge an occupational license for.
I have one question.
For rental property. This, this will be the last one, I can't.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
On that occupational license, you got these guys coming here cutting grass, don't have no DOT numbers on them, they don't have no names on their truck, and I bet you they're not paying enough face value. Can the police do anything about that or are you just letting it go?
No, I'm sure the police can drive by and see if they have their DOTs, you know, if they have a license.
Call Kent County then, and then see if they'll sign a police officer down with the jacket?
I would call the Park Hills dispatch line, not the 911, and, and if Cody has a.
You got quite a few of them down here, you know, I'm fighting about my occupational.
Right, right, no, I understand. And if Cody has a problem, Mike or I'll talk to him.
Okay, I'll wait for more.
All right, thank you. Attorneys report?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, just a couple of updates. I did send Ways and Means the, let me clarify that, bear with me. Yes, um, the sidewalk agreement, you've got that?
I did.
So I, I just want to make sure, uh, when you get to a point with the sign, when they bring that back here, have everyone.
I'll make sure the mayor has time to.
Perfect.
Review it handy and all that good stuff.
Okay, good, just to make sure that's on record. Thank you. 240 Shelby, just, I'm working with a title agency with respect to that, it's about $4,500 and change in liens, so I'll hope to, really, I hope the next update I provide is, is really Terry cashing a check. 305 Main, I've already mentioned, I'm not going to get any more details with that. There are a few things, the first is the sec, actually, it's on my computer, the second reading for tonight of the tax rates, and I'm going to read that aloud for a second So this is Bromley ordinance 2025-8. This is an ordinance of the city of Bromley, Kenton County, Kentucky, fixing the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2025 and ending June 30th of 2026 upon real estate, personal and mixed property in the city of Bromley, Kentucky, and fixing the time for payment and penalty for non-payment of the same. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Bromley, Kentucky, this is section one, that an ad of Valerum tax of .194 on each $100 of value of real estate and .015 on each $100 of value of personal and mixed property, including watercraft, within the corporate limits of the city of Bromley. These funds will be used for ordinary municipal purposes to carry out the government of the city, including but not limited to police, fire protection, salaries of all administrative officers, utilities, insurance, bonds, acquisition of equipment, supplies for the city purposes, for city purposes, professional services and the general cost of carrying on the business of the government of the city as provided in the adopted budget. The assessed value of all real estate and personal property subject to this tax shall be assessed at the value as finally determined by the property value administrator of Kenton County, Kentucky. Under section two, the tax herein imposed shall be due by the date, due, by the due date as determined by the Kenton County Sheriff and shall incur a penalty of 25% and shall bear interest at a rate of 1% per month or part of a month from the date delinquent until paid in full. Any and all ordinances in conflict with this shall be in hereby or repealed to the extent of the conflict. And the city of Bromley shall lean for all taxes under this ordinance as provided by law. And this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force from and after its passage publication, which may be in summary form and recording according to law.
Need a motion to accept 2025-8?
I'll make the motion, 725-8.
Tim, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So ordered.
And lastly, this is a municipal order, this is with respect to the representative for the city, for the Kent County Joint Code Enforcement Board, so you know. So this is Bromley Municipal Order 2025-9, a municipal order of the city of Bromley, Kenton County, Kentucky, appointing a representative of the city to the Kent County Joint Code Enforcement Board, whereas the city of Bromley is a member of the Kent County Joint Code Enforcement Board and eligible to appoint a representative to the board. Now therefore, be, be it ordered that the city of Bromley, Kentucky does hereby name, appoint and nominate Donnie Mills as its representative to the Kent County Joint Code Enforcement Board for an additional term.
Do we need to move on then?
Yes, you do.
Need a motion to accept Donnie Mills as a representative? You want to second this one?
Yes.
All in favor?
I'm not standing.
You're upstanding, you and Tim?
You and Tim.
All right. Roll call.
Right.
Stand.
Right.
Aye.
I don't.
No?
Okay.
So two out of six, three out of six?
Three out of six. Three out of five. I have no vote. Want to keep rolling while you're hot?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm finished. Thank you.
Ways and Means, Mike?
Uh, just something here. I know, I, I was stuck in there, sir. A couple of small things that I noticed that I really aren't much at all, haven't had a chance to talk to Mary, but I'll check with her and I'll get my issues addressed with her. I just haven't had time to get hold, haven't had time to get a hold of her. They're really minor, it looks like something may have been towed to Bronch, is all it is. So I'll get with that, I'll get with her on it, and I can explain next month or I'll do it by way of, of Brittany.
That's it? Parking playground, Tim?
Um, his report is the pickleball court got laid today, um, got, and not sure when it's going to be lined, but we'll find out when it's going to be lined, how long it has to sit before they can paint it. Um, the new swing set was put in, the barge was put in, waiting to do the groundwork on that, as far as the cushion and the cover up. And he, Tim also wanted to add that, why, he spent, he's been spending a lot of time at the park with these two projects, and he says he's talked to several citizens and now had one complaint, and that's about the property, the old school building, talking about the rusty pieces of equipment, the weeds that are high. He says he knows he wouldn't want to look at it every day and it's a mess and wants to know if he can try and clean it up a little bit. The park looks so nice, hates to have that across the street from the park and the concern about the big hole that's in the sidewalk. I know that was another one of his concerns.
What I understand, Duke is the reason and responsible for that hole. I could probably reach out and call them and see if they'll set a plate or we can have ideal come down and set a plate and then Duke can move it, but.
I think it's really Joe's responsibility, so, I think, I mean, Jack did a heck of a job addressing it for him. He took it on his own to do that after, actually, ahead of the time we, we heard about, complained about it. Issue, the issue that I noticed about the thing is that there was cops who taped up at first, and then the storm came through, blew it down, and there was hardly anything up causing the concern, which is, which is correct. And then Jack actually took it on his own to address it, and if you see it right now, there's yellow or orange fencing around it.
Okay.
I think it's well protected. Um, you know, but Joe is out of town, the owner, he's out of town, he thinks Jack's been taking care of it for him. I think he actually responded online about it to, to whoever it was, and hopefully that helped that guy's concerns.
Well, I guess another one of Tim's concern is, is the level of visibility, yet he said he hasn't seen him there in quite a while.
It's been a few weeks. He's been out of town.
So is there.
But I know that talking to him personally, that the backside of that building is going to get buttoned up for, you know, construction during the winter. He, he really wanted to get the, the parking lot in this, this season, but Duke has caused such a hard delay on it, and it was beyond his control, and so perhaps the parking lot would have already been done.
Anything you can do about the weeds?
I'm sure he will, yeah. We can, we can let it out, yeah.
Okay.
As a matter of fact.
Your big one was a minute.
As a matter of fact, Joe actually identified where, where the hole needed to be set, and he thought everything would be fine if he was out of town, and they came in and said it, he even marked it, because I saw the marking, they took it upon themselves to move the hole right at center of the sidewalk. The brand new hole was put in the center of the sidewalk.
They do that in Mexico.
Yeah. So, of course, when Joe came back, he, he raised as much pain as he could, and then they had to come back and move it from year to year. And now there's some delay, other delays, I guess maybe they're getting back somehow. I won't, I won't put it as, but it's Duke, it's Duke.
Would you just have the park looking seven minutes, he wants to make sure the surrounding areas and its spread is still where.
I mean, that, you know, even, we've been working on this sidewalk replacement, uh, of. I mean, that, you know, even, we've been working on this sidewalk replacement, uh, agreement for a long time. So now that we've got this taken care of, at least close to it. He also wanted to get the sidewalk done this season, so that may get delayed as well, but it's all, it's all ready to be done. Let's put it that way. Soon as we get the agreement signed by everybody and all that good stuff, so.
Jack, do we have any of those yellow flashing caution lights for horses or anything? Let me see if I can get us a couple of those. We could use them somewhere else down the road. All right, insurance and grants, Kelly?
Um, basically don't have it too much other than, um, KOC reached out and they are going to come in and reevaluate, uh, the city for insurance and I'm waiting on the year when they're going to come do that. Other than that, that's it.
Okay. Mayor's report, Mike Denham will give, uh, his mayor's report next month. Committee reports acceptance. Tim made a motion to accept the committee reports?
I'll second.
Mike's second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered. Old business.
Uh, we discussed the, uh, potential survey to be done down at the lot behind the church, not only the soccer fields that, uh, Mr. Waugh so kindly gave us with our last council meeting, but also the, the subsequent lot to the left behind the, uh, church down there for potential boat ramp project in the future. I've been going back and forth between, uh, Mayor Denham, Mr. Waugh and sanitation district to try to figure out what's going to be best for everyone. Uh, Mr. Waugh has finally, uh, offered to pay for more than half of the, the process, I think in total, almost $12,000. The city would still be responsible for the survey, which includes splitting those two lots apart from one other because the boat ramp is going to require a 40-year lease. And, uh, we actually renegotiated with the sanitation district through a five-year lease on the larger portion of that lot. So that gives the city a, uh, foot in the door again, uh, on that property down there. Gets us set for success as far as utilizing those spaces for recreation and future recreation. But it is going to come at a cost to the city of around $5,500 would be our responsibility. So I would need to make a motion to authorize the mayor to spend that for the purpose of the survey.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor? Oppose? Any new business? Communications?
No.
Sometimes that's good, sometimes it's bad. Need a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I can't do it. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So ordered. Meeting's officially over.